So I'm gonna call this meeting to order is 3:30 Thursday, April 28th, 2022. And this is a regular meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And so if we could have roll call, please.
Director Abrika.
Here.
Director Combs.
Here.
Director Bert.
Here.
Director Kremen. Director Kremen.
He may join us back. He was there. Alright, so.
And Director Pine.
President.
Okay, so we do have a call to get started. And our next item is the approval of the agenda. If there are any changes or modifications. And if not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. And I'll second.
Okay, moved in second. We can have a roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
There.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, let the record show Director Kremen joined us, although he was there and then he went out, but he's back in. So our next item is approval of the meeting minutes of March 24th, 2022. Any questions on any part of the minutes from anyone? Including any members of the public. But if if no comments, then I'll entertain a motion for the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second and roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion carried. Our next item, number four, is the time for public comments. And this is an opportunity for any members of the public to address the board on any item, any topic that is not on the agenda. And just understanding we cannot engage in any lengthy discussion. And so Miko, do we have any requests that you see?
I have not received any requests and I do not see any hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Okay, then we'll continue now with the regular business part of the agenda. And item number five is the consent agenda. And we have a couple items. And so I'll ask any questions on any of them from the public or anybody wishes to pull any of the two items out. And again, if there's no request, we then could move ahead with a motion for that one.
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
Exactly.
Okay, moved in second. Roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried there. And now we'll move on to item six, the Executive Director's Report. And so I'll turn it over to our director, Margaret.
Thank you, everyone. Hello, board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you a quick update. As you read in your board packet, we have a few updates on each of the project elements for the downstream Reach One project. As part of our mitigation work, we have installed and planted native gum plants for part of the restoration work and have discovered that local herbivores, including rabbits and jackrabbits, find them very tasty. So they are being protected so that in a year or two, once they are well established, they will no longer be quite the tempting salad bar for our local critters. We are still working on the signage and other commemorative plaque information for the downstream reach. That's been slow for a variety of reasons, but we are narrowing in on completing that. We've also identified a good artist who may be able to provide some very artful and useful illustrations for a part of our commemorative panels or our display panels. Moving on up, we've been very busy with the Army Corps of Engineers. There have been a lot of current events with just transactional material information and their progress on doing their economic analyses and evaluating their alternative, doing their alternatives analysis. The best news about this is the economic benefit analysis, although not finalized, has been pretty clearly confirmed to be positive. So it's full steam ahead. We don't need to de-scope and step back. The analysis says this has a positive beneficial economic outcome. So that question has been answered. We have for a variety of engineering and just process and timing issues, the application of our, submission of our permit application to the regional board has slipped a little bit. However, at the same time, there is some very recent interesting news. As you might have recalled, in the previous federal administration, an order had come down that encouraged, not encouraged, required regional water quality control boards or similar jurisdictions to complete their permit reviews within a very short period of time. For reasons I am not clear on, that has been reinstated. So once we submit our permit application, the regional board has 30 days to make a determination. This is going to be important and helpful for us to meet our September deadline. At the same time, the board also has kind of a a fail-safe switch or a pause button that they can hit by saying, oh, we deem this deficient or incomplete, and they'll kick it back to us if they absolutely cannot finish it in that 30-day period. So it behooves us to take extra care and time to make sure that all aspects of our permit application are as complete and as and that we are not planning for iterative process, but we're planning for as fulsome and complete a package as possible. So we are anticipating a May submission and want to be working as closely and as cooperatively as possible with our permit engineer to make sure that she is capable of meeting that very strict, very, very intense deadline for them. Our outreach to creekside property owners continues. We are now up to 24 out of out of 35 private property owners have given us permissions to enter. Valley Water has recently initiated the contract for the surveys needed for Site Five, which is the furthest downstream potential widening site and for top of bank work. So that is progressing. And we had a very successful public tour on April 18th, where several of our member partners and some staff from local elected offices, as well as creek neighbors, joined us on that tour. So that was, I think, very helpful and informative all around. Reach Three, the evaluation of detention basins continues. Plans are in progress to revisit the site and collect more data, which is necessary to do a more complete feasibility assessment and get an idea of what this would cost if this does turn out to be technically feasible. And moving on over to Safer. On Monday, we released the notice of preparation. Most of you, I think, should be well aware of that by now. That was an exciting milestone for us. We have two events planned. One will be, they'll both be by Zoom, but one will also be in person. We're looking at confirming a location for that hybrid meeting. That's, we're going to have some additional outreach, any place that we can reach out to community groups and other public venues to share the details of the notice of preparation, what the EIR process entails, how the public can comment, and of course, the motivation for the project, why we're doing the Safer Bay project in the first place. Aligned with that, we, as you know, we have secured a $1 million grant through Measure AA. That decision will be finalized on June 24th. Tess and I spoke with a representative from the Measure AA grant this afternoon, and we learned that the, their basically their advisory group has suggested that the Safer Bay project merits an increase in that funding, and that may happen in October. So we'll have two bites of the apple in fairly rapid succession. We don't know yet what the additional award will be, but they said the minimum would be $600,000. Of course, pending their board's decision at their October board meeting. So of course, all of this is contingent upon the final blessing of the board on June 24th and then again in October. But it seems very hopeful. We submitted a pre-application for some funding from the National Federal Wildlife Foundation, encouraged by conversations with Dave Halsing at the Refuge, who has applied for and won a couple of these grants. This is a great opportunity for us to coordinate and to do some mutual support, if you will, with the Wildlife Refuge. And we are seeking 3.8 million for that particular grant. We had another successful public tour on the 19th. And I think, and Tess can probably corroborate this, I think that tour on the 19th that was attended by our Measure AA grant manager might be one of the reasons why they're thinking about expanding our award. So they got to see firsthand what we were doing and the benefits it would provide. And that sums up my executive report and happy to take any questions.
I'll open it up for any questions, comments from the board. And then I'll check with Miko if there are any requests from the public also.
Jerry Hahn wishes to speak.
Hi, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Margaret, I have several questions, fairly short, I think. For the CAP 205, how much are we looking at for that? How much money could that possibly bring in?
It's let's see, I think it's like 8.9 million.
Oh, that's pretty considerable then. Yeah.
Yeah, it is pretty considerable. Indeed, it is.
Good. Well, I hope that goes forward. It sounds positive.
And I must say, it's been a pleasure working with the Army Corps. And I know that their process and hours sometimes seem a little bit like standard and metric, you know? It's, but they've actually been fantastic to work with. And with taking their process and their cycles of decision-making into consideration, I think it's coming along just fine.
Well, that's good to hear. So a quick comment about the 30-day permit from the Water Board. That would be a record time if that actually works. It'll be interesting to see.
I know, I know. And I think it's something that they're sweating.
I bet they are.
Yeah. And I can't even imagine if it's probably going to change how they have to, like, manage their workload and their staff assignments for that workload and the scheduling and the prioritization of projects, you know, permit application reviews. So I think it behooves us to be extremely conscientious about how we engage with Susan and others at the Water Board to make sure that we are facilitating their success and ours as well.
Exactly. That's kind of what I was gonna say. Make it as easy on them as possible because that's an almost impossible timeline, you know, for somebody to really pay good attention to it. But well, we'll see how that works out. Then two other quick questions. I had thought I'd heard, and maybe I was wrong, that that the Site Five might be held off for funding reasons. Is that correct?
Possibly, possibly. But because we now have the opportunity with Valley Water's extra surveying work, and I have to give some props to our project lead on this, Peter Park had, I think, an insightful suggestion about rather than looking at what would be necessary to actually sort of sculpt the channel wall to conform to the fourth bore, if there are ways of augmenting the head wall on the bridge and the flood wall on the top of the bank, can we effectively accomplish the same level of flood protection for much less cost?
Okay.
So that's part of what's being surveyed right now and being analyzed.
Yeah. Okay. That's, I was wondering why, why we were going ahead with that. I thought it had been put on hold. But that makes a lot of sense. So you're looking at another solution essentially.
Looking at another option, looking at another solution and seeing how we can do it. There are many reasons for looking at another solution, not least of which is the constructability or the logistics of the construction in that area are so tricky.
Yeah. Yeah, indeed. So very, very narrow spaces and traffic issues and all sorts of stuff.
Oh, and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah. And the very last thing had to do with the Reach Three. Is the JP is still pursuing both sites on Stanford property or have you changed to one?
Just to one.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they're, just the one is an area near the old boating nursery.
Yeah.
The other side would have had too many impacts to existing, you know, the stable operation that happens there and other things that are very much inactive use as well as some other constraints. So and I think not as functionally likely to be functional.
Yeah, I know that I'm fairly familiar with the area. I know there will be impacts anyway to those facilities, but they'll be construction-related, not permanent. So, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question if I may. When did we make a decision to be on the nursery side versus the other side?
Um, the results came back from an initial conversation between, oh, I think, I want to punt this a little bit to Kevin if he's on, and if he had a scheduled conflict. So Kevin, would you mind taking this and getting the Wayback Machine and?
Yeah. So it was about a year ago, we had a consultation between one of our consultants, who specializes in cultural resources and Stanford's academic and administrative archaeologists, who knows all of the resources out there very well. And it was recommended that the potential design we were looking at would be very difficult to implement because it would require the removal and replacement of a bunch of existing cultural resources. We don't know exactly what it is, but it could be anywhere from, you know, a used site to human remains. So we'd also would need to move some infrastructure because they have buildings there that we weren't counting on. When you look at an aerial image, you don't recognize that where we wanted to dig a big hole, there are already buildings in place there that we would have to move and relocate and to keep their operations going there. So for those reasons, and because of the hydraulics of that area, it didn't really work as well as the boating nursery site. We made the decision to focus on the one. So that was about a year ago. It was actually, so almost exactly a year ago.
I might have missed the board meeting. Did we discuss this at a board meeting?
Um, I don't recall that we did. I think we had a technical discussion of, you know, for various reasons, this has sort of fallen off the realm of feasibility. So focusing on the boating site.
I believe we did. I believe we, Margaret, you included it in one of your ED reports as a part of the update.
Yeah. It wasn't a formal board decision, but it was certainly an update.
Because I could chime in, I'll just have to, I mean, this is a little bit news to me too. If only because I thought like initially that both sites were going to be required. I never understood it as an either or, as far as like the flood protection we were looking for. And so I don't want to sidetrack the conversation because maybe it is that Director Kremen and I were just not attuned or aware, but but I have to agree with Director Kremen that I'm a little surprised here too. And again, because I always thought that both sites were necessary to get to the level of protection that we were looking for.
Yeah, I guess this is, to me, there are some policy issues here. I agree with Director Combs. So I'd like this brought to us in detail as opposed to just mention it. Just because there's some buildings there, I don't think that's relevant. If there's some hydrology, and I mean, if we're doing an EIR anyhow, I think we have to consider everything. Because if we're going to lose protection or we're not going to get as much protection downstream, or, you know, tell us more because, but maybe the rest of the board members remember the discussion or were part of it.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it was presented as an action item. So I agree. I think it was, I mean, I vaguely remember that it was mentioned as a report, but you know, I think when they're mentioned as a report, we don't get the idea that like, okay, we'll have to act on it. So I mean, I think it would be good to just bring it back, at least to get a fuller understanding of what's, even how it happened. And so, because there may be other things down the line that, I mean, I do appreciate the idea of the, you know, technical side and a feasibility, but at the same time, if we're had certain assumptions about stuff, it's probably good to bring them, yeah. Okay, so I think we were, yeah, we were sort of in the stage of questions or comments on anything. I did have a question on the Army Corps, because I know, not in the recent past, but kind of in the distant past, that I kind of, I think it was before I got on the board, but you know, I've been on the board for a while. So that originally the Army Corps had found like, like there was no economic benefit, you know, for this area. As I understand, is one of the things they considered to see if then we're eligible to receive funds. So anyway, now it sounds like they did further study or they is, I just want to make sure, like, is that something we have in writing from them or that, you know? Yeah. If anybody else knows about that stuff, because I do, you know, remember even at the beginning of the JPA formation, a lot of reliance was put on the federal Army Corps, and then it was sort of abandoned because, partly because of that reason. The other one was just the way things were going. That so anyway, just if you could elaborate on that a little bit, or, you know, that they're willing to make a request and all of that. But if they did find that in fact it is a kind of a vital economic interest to the country or something that we have that in writing from them.
Kevin, would you mind taking on this in more detail? Because some of this goes back to the general investigation study that I think you're much more conversant with.
Yeah, so you're right. The general investigation was abandoned at one point in time because it was just such a long road to get to federal funding. I stepped away to close my door. This new program, the CAP 205, does not require congressional appropriations to get construction funding. It's administered through the San Francisco District of the Corps, and they have in the program, a certain amount of discretionary funding that they can provide to projects within their district. So when we signed the feasibility cost share agreement several months ago with the Corps of Engineers, that was kind of a promise to investigate our project site and make a determinant of economic benefit. Like Margaret said, it's not a finalized determination yet, but there is a positive outcome from the economic analysis. And so what will happen is that at the next milestone, what they call a milestone, there'll be a meeting with the Corps of Engineers in their, in their division, and they'll present a TSP, which stands for tentatively selected plan. And if that plan is approved at the district management and division management level, then the district can begin to transition to the next phase, which would be pre-designing construction. And so it's a much faster route to get federal dollars. So we kind of have a promise through the federal feasibility cost share agreement. They just need to do their analysis before money comes through.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Yeah. Any other questions or comments on any part of the report?
Maybe just a follow-up for Kevin. When would that TSB be completed, do you think?
They're shooting for May 27th. That's the tentative plan. But they're scrambling, get a lot of work in time for that.
Kevin, you cut out there at the end. Could you perhaps repeat the last few words you said?
Oh, I just said that they're really scrambling to meet that May 27th deadline that's been placed on them. So it's an, maybe an optimistic date, but they have all intensive of meeting that date.
Any other questions, comments? I think I already asked, yeah, public already had public comment. And so so Margaret, I think that concludes the report. Am I correct?
That's concluding the director's report, and we can move on to the next action item.
So the next section is action items. We have a couple of them, one dealing with the, well, both dealing with budget, but one is an adjustment. So we'll start with that.
Sure. So as we've mentioned in the director's report, the Army Corps of Engineers operates on a slightly different time schedule. Their fiscal year and hours are not aligned. Their fiscal year and hours, the misalignment also accounts for a little bit of their, when they need funding doesn't coincide with when we allocate funding all the time. And because we have asked them to accelerate their work on this project to make sure that it coincides with funding and schedule for for other elements of the project and that we are continuing to hit our marks and milestones in our schedule. We need to do some, we need to pay our part of the next cost share agreement component before we actually come to the end or the beginning of our next fiscal year. We have funds in remainder from the Reach One funding agreement that was held for monitoring maintenance restoration work that was anticipated to be more costly than it's actually turned out to be. So we can transfer, move forward or shift those funds in advance of next fiscal year's contribution to make sure that the Army Corps of Engineers continues to have their match share from us so they can keep pace with the schedule that, as Kevin said, is ambitious but aiming toward an end of May completion for the tentatively selected plan. I hope that made sense.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, comments on?
Yeah.
No questions, comments, any requests from the public?
Let's see, any requests for public comment?
Okay. Okay, so then we can move with. A motion on this one.
Make the motion.
Okay. I'll second. A roll call.
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Bird?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Director Kerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next the next item is also. All the draft budget part, so.
Okay, so the changes that have occurred in the draft budget from the last time you saw them was the confirmation again of the Army Corps of Engineers. Our share of the. The CAP two oh five study contribution, the non-federal share. So because. Our operating budget doesn't have a specific capital budget. I I want to make sure that folks realize that that the big jump in the size of the budget from last year has to do with. In part because we're asking for the CAP two oh five contribution. That's for course, project for capital project work. And not operational cost. There are a couple of other details, looking at the cost for IT consulting support. To ensure that our systems are robust and secure. Cost a little bit more than I anticipated. We're still not in contract with a service provider. But getting their bid and getting, you know, five different comparisons of cost. Gave gave me a much better idea of the realistic cost for that service. And and also a cost for software to do. A more formal hourly time tracking so that we have auditable. Timekeeping for our anticipated upcoming HMGP and BRIC grants. So all those together have added just a few more details in the draft budget. But otherwise, it remains unchanged.
Okay, any questions on the draft budget for twenty two twenty three? Either board or. Members of the public.
I don't have any public requests to speak on this item.
So this is a draft budget in the sense that either. We could take action now or. Do it at the next meeting, so. Any thoughts on that from more members? Any members of the Finance Committee or any thoughts?
Uh, this is Pat. I'll I'll just say, or rather ask, do we anticipate any other? Changes to the budget before we would have to adopt?
Only potentially that if you were to. Complete my review and decide that a cost of living adjustment or any other adjustments to my salary were in order. Then that would need to be incorporated into the budget prior to adoption.
Okay. And. If we have those changes, would would there be a? Would. Procedurally, would there be an issue on revisiting the budget? Is that just a budget amendment?
It it could easily be a budget amendment procedurally. I I think you could do things a number of different ways. You could have a provisional budget. You could have a special meeting to formalize the budget sooner than a month from now. You could adopt the budget now and do a budget amendment next month.
And and we have to have the budget adopted by when?
The end of May.
Okay, then. I don't see an urgency to adopt it at this meeting, just at the May meeting.
I'd I'd agree with that. We might as well have. Factoring out, you know, the outcome of the performance review, too.
Right. Yeah, so I think this will then just remain a report at this point. We won't take any action. And you know, whatever we need to do later, we can do. Okay. All right, so. So that concludes our. Agenda up to closed session, so. We will adjourn into closed session and then. You know, just come back. And do board comments and report from closed session. But just procedurally, any, are there any requests for comments from the public on closed session? And.
I do not have any. Wait, Jerry Hearn has a comment.
Uh, thank you again. I I'm I'm reading, it says public employee performance evaluation, and it's about Margaret. I have no idea, of course, what's going on because this is a closed session. But I just want to say that when when we lost Len and he moved on to another job, I was very concerned about. Losing momentum with the projects that were going on, and I just want to say to the board. I think Margaret has done a phenomenal job of steering this organization, of keeping the staff. Morale up. It's a very small, extremely hardworking staff, and she does a great job with them. And I'm just pleased as punch that she's on board and and move on all this stuff ahead as she does, so. I take that into consideration from from a public member. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other request, I think, Miko, you you just take us to the closed session meeting.
Yes, I will create a group for you right now.
I'll. I'll text Margaret when we. Finish our discussion first and then.
Okay.
You can come in, yeah.
Okay, hold on just a moment, please.
Thank you. So we're back into open session because. Yeah, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, Director Abrika.
Yes, all right. Yeah, so just very quickly, we. We did go in a closed session and there's no reportable action. And so we'll continue with. Number nine, which is board member comments, information, announcements. Anybody have anything to? Report or?
I only I only see you and I that we've returned from the breakout room.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I only see you and I. I can't see, I couldn't see anybody else even previously, but so Miko, are we?
Um, I can move them back. I just want to make sure they are aware the closed session has ended.
Oh, no, yeah, we, yeah, we ended it.
Okay, I will move them, move them back then. Hold on. Okay. Everyone has returned.
Okay. Okay, so reporting out of closed session, now that we have all our board members back. And so we held closed session and there's no reportable action. And so then I was asking for number nine, if there are any announcements or comments, reports from any board member at this point. And. Okay, then if not, then we will. Well, we'll adjourn at approximately four fifteen. Okay, all right, thank you.
Very much.
Bye bye. Bye, everyone.